Good evening. Welcome to the Board of Supervisors Business Meeting, Thursday, November 20th, 2025, 6:00 PM. The meeting is being livestreamed via YouTube for viewing only. Also, the video recording will be posted on the township website. A video camera has been installed in the township auditorium for security purposes only. I'd like to call this meeting to order. First, Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which sustains, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Chair Darby?
Here.
Vice Chair Charles is absent, but I'll note that she should be here momentarily.
And there she is.
And there she is.
Right on time.
Vice Chair Charles? Supervisor McFarland? Supervisor Knights? Supervisor Nufaglais?
Here.
And our student representative, Maya Frazier.
Here.
Everyone is here.
Prior to the meeting, we had an executive session which was held to discuss litigation and personnel matters. So we have two presentations today, and first up is our student representative, Maya Frazier, with her report.
Good evening, everyone. The Methacton Theater Company performed their annual fall play last Thursday, Friday, and Saturday. The play was Alice in Wonderland and showcased a cast and crew of over 40 students. Production started in September, so performances were highly anticipated. All shows saw a huge turnout, making it very successful as usual. Also involving the Methacton Theater Company, spring musical auditions were yesterday, today, and tomorrow. The Spring Musical is Little Shop of Horrors and, as of right now, will showcase the talents of over 60 students. The Spring Musical always has a huge turnout and very positive feedback from teachers, parents, students, and community members. Last year notably, the Spring Musical Guys and Dolls won several nominations at the Philadelphia Independence Awards. MHSTC is hoping for a similar result this year. On Monday, November 17th, a financial aid information session was held at the high school in the evening. The session included instructions, demonstration, and information about FAFSA and all things financial aid. This is especially helpful to the juniors of parents' juniors who will need help with the overload that our financial aid forms. Minithon, a student-run organization aiming to raise money for pediatric cancer research, will be holding a student versus faculty basketball game on November 25th. This is the first student versus faculty game since pre-COVID, and I can say, after listening to teachers promote the game, everyone is very excited. Lastly, schools and offices will be closed November 26th to the 28th for Thanksgiving break.
Thank you. All right, next is our outgoing student rep, Rashika Savakumar. This is a recognition for you. So I'm just gonna read your letter, and then we'll come up and greet you, okay? So "The Members of the Lower Providence Township Board of Supervisors wish and acknowledge the service of Rashika as student representative to the board. Rashika served from September 2024 to August 2025, attending the business meetings of the board. During those meetings, time was set aside for a report from the student representative, and Rashika presented timely and valuable news from a student's perspective to the board and township residents." The Board of Supervisors would like to recognize the initiative of Rashika in seeking the position of student representative and commend her thoughtful approach to the community service, to the community, and for your service and enthusiasm for local government. So we're sad that you're not up here with us anymore, but thank you so much. And we have something here for you.
Photo. Everybody, yeah. Not Mike. Not Mike, he can get in.
Wish you all the best.
Thank you.
So you're welcome to stay with us. You gonna stay with us, hang out with us?
Yeah.
Okay, wonderful. All right, she is committed.
She wants to hear Rich's three-hour budget.
She's committed. So next is the consent agenda. I'd like to make a motion to accept the consent agenda, which includes the minutes from the Board of Supervisors meeting on November 6th. There's minutes from the different township boards, committees, and commission, the acceptance of the departmental monthly reports, and also fiscal matters. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Any public comment? Any board comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, motion carries. Next is some old business. The first one is authorization to advertise the borrowing ordinance, and Solicitor Clark and Township Manager EJ Mentry are gonna tag-team on this one.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Before the board tonight is the request to authorize advertisement of a borrowing ordinance to essentially go out for a general obligation bond to cover the cost of the renovation work at 800 Adams Avenue. So I'll just kinda read the opening to the ordinance, and then we can answer any questions. An ordinance of the Lower Providence Township Board of Supervisors, Montgomery County, pursuant to the Local Government Unit Debt Act, setting forth its intention to authorize and direct the incurrence of non-electoral debt through the issuance of its general obligation bonds, series of 2026, in the aggregate principal amount of $8,050,000 for the purpose of providing funds to finance the construction, development, and design of real property for use as the township's new municipal building and various other capital improvements and the payment of the costs of issuance on the bonds collectively, the project. So this is obviously a project we've been discussing for a year now. We went out for the first round of borrowing back at the beginning of this year to issue new debt to generate, to generate bonds, or to generate the money to cover the cost of the acquisition of 800 Adams Avenue. We knew at that time that there would be a second borrowing to cover the cost of the renovations. Over the course of the last several weeks, or even months, I would say, through the budget process, we had been projecting a borrowing in the range of $10 to $12 million needed for this project. So we're happy to report that, based on the results of the bids that were submitted last week, which are still under review, but are substantial, the review's substantially completed, and they came in well under the projected budget, that we are only recommending a borrowing of $8 million. And the extra $50,000 is essentially to cover the closing costs associated with the borrowing.
And the document that's in front of you tonight has been prepared by the township's bond council, Obermeyer, Redmond, Maxwell, and Hippel. Over the last several months, they've been working alongside your manager, your assistant manager, your finance director, your financial advisor, and our office to make sure that the document you have in front of you complies in every aspect with the law. And they're also in the process of putting together all of the documents to eventually go out to bid, to find out, to get the different proposals for this borrowing. Everything's in order.
I just have one question in regards to the borrowing. I know earlier this year, we were thinking we were gonna borrow, like, 12 million or something? So this is a lot lower than that?
Exactly.
Can you explain the reason why it's lower at this time?
Yeah, so through the budget process, we kinda provided a range of between $10 and $12 million is what our expected borrowing amount would need to be. We had Boyle Construction, who's the township's construction manager for the project, present to the board, I think about a month or a month and a half ago, with their estimates for this work prior to it going out to bid. And the reality is, the bids came in a lot better than what the estimated costs were. We think there's a couple of factors that contributed to that. I think that we erred on the side of conservative estimating. You know, the last thing we wanted was for the bids to come in a couple million dollars over what our projections were. And we're very happy to report that they came in several million dollars under. We think the biggest factor was the timing of when this project was put out to bid. And that was something that was discussed when Boyle presented to the board. And kudos to the board for, you know, authorizing to put this project out to bid at the time that it did, because I think that was the biggest factor in us getting such competitive pricing for the project. This is a really good construction project, given the time of year, because it's mostly indoor construction work, where there's not a lot of public construction projects that are bid out this time of year. So we saw a tremendous amount of competition, a tremendous amount of interest in competition, and as a result, competitive bids that drove the price down.
That's great. Thank you.
Sorry, just to follow up on that. EJ, if you could just, for the benefit of the public, the actual amount we're borrowing is not going to be the total amount of the renovations or our funds. Can you just walk through some of those?
Yes, absolutely. So at the next meeting, we'll have the final bid tabulation results and recommendations to the board to award the contracts. But roughly what we're looking at was all of the multi-prime bids coming in at a total of about $7.1 million. So that's for all of the hard costs or the construction costs associated with the project. But on top of that, there's a significant amount of kind of owner-direct or soft costs, things like paying the architect, paying the construction manager, all of the AV, IT, video work, any furniture, any relocation expenses, things like that. And the total estimate for those costs, which are not part of this bid, we're in the range of about $1.7 to $1.8 million. So in essence, a total project cost of about $9 million is what we're looking at.
And those other funds are already available. We don't need to borrow those.
Correct, yes. We do have some essentially left over from the first borrowing, which was done by design at the board's approval, to borrow a little extra when we, when we had to buy the building to kinda have some money to use, some excess money to use as kinda the seed money for the designs and renovation work. So there's about, about $2 million of unused money from the first borrowing available to put towards this project.
Okay, thanks. And so then, at this moment, the total cost would appear to be something at or just under 20 million?
Absolutely, yep, with the purchase and the renovations, yep.
Thank you.
And again, when we were talking about building an entire new building, those costs were what, 32, 35 million?
They were, as of about two years ago, they were in that 34 to $35 million range.
Now it could be 40 million.
The cost of new construction is higher than renovation work, and likely those costs have gone up. The other thing to keep in mind is what we were designing to at that time was significantly less space than what we're getting through this project of acquiring an existing building and renovating it. By about 10,000 square feet, we're getting about 10,000 square feet more for almost half the price.
And also not disrupting the Eagleville Park area through this whole, because that would have been very difficult.
Massive disruption.
Yes, for all the events that we have here. Also too, if anyone's been through home construction, there's always change orders. There's always things that come up. Are we prepared for those with the budget that we've set, or would we have to borrow more money?
We feel very confident that the amount that we're recommending for this borrowing would cover, has extra built-in to account for any potential contingencies or change orders. And the reason the ordinance is drafted the way it is, that basically says it can be used to finance the construction and development and design of the new municipal building and various other capital improvements, is so in the event that we don't use all of what we borrow, we can put that towards other township capital projects. But we feel it is at the board's discretion. You could, you could borrow more if you, if you wanted to. If you wanna have more available for capital projects, you could do that. But we feel comfortable in this number, that it is a very safe number that would cover any potential contingencies and change orders.
Okay, thank you.
And you had mentioned some other costs that exist that are not going out to bid. So correct me if I'm wrong, but I think like those soft costs are well-known, and the AV costs are gonna be procured through the state's Co-Stars program, where we already know the costs.
That's correct. And some of those bigger, you know, individual contracts that fall in those soft cost category will also come before the board for approval. It just doesn't require this bidding process, because as you stated, it's through the state's Co-Stars program, which kind of does all the bidding for us.
Thank you. So I'd like to make a motion to authorize the advertisement of the borrowing ordinance as, as we have. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any public comment? Any board comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, motion carries. Are you okay? I'm sorry? Oh, okay. Oh, okay. No worries. Okay, all right. So next up, we have a presentation of the proposed budget and authorization to advertise the 2026 budget. So this is a time that we've all been looking forward to with the budget. So I think Township Manager EJ Mentry is gonna do a wonderful presentation here to explain the budget.
I appreciate that, Madam Chair. Thank you. Yeah, we have a brief presentation prepared for the board, just to kinda walk through the steps of where we are and how we got here, and some, some options facing the board tonight for a decision prior to the authorization to advertise. So as is always the case, we went through a series of public budget workshops over the course of the last couple of months, spanning several hours of discussion, going through every fund, all of the departmental requests, capital requests, any major changes, highlights, anomalies in the proposed budget. And we kinda narrowed it down to the final result that's before you tonight. What I would say about the budget, primarily focusing on the general fund, which is our main operating fund, is perhaps unlike some previous years, there's not a whole lot to highlight or talk about. We kept the budget very tight this year because we knew that with the building project, there would be an additional borrowing, an additional cost and taxes associated with that. So the department heads were charged with basically not asking for any, anything new, anything extra, or in addition to that, finding areas to potentially reduce. And what that resulted in is essentially winnowing the, the general fund deficit down to measly $47,500, which is significantly lower than, than any general fund deficit we've faced over the past several years. I think when I started here, this is now my fourth budget process with the board. The first year, we were facing a deficit of over $1 million. And over the last couple of years, that number's slowly gone down. So this screen kind of reflects the downward trajectory of the, kinda the health of the general fund in terms of the deficit that we were facing each year. Two years ago was just shy of $800,000. Last year was a little over $300,000. This year, it's down to $47,500. So that's work that we're, we're very proud of. And I have to commend Rich and the Finance Department for all of their hard work in, in managing the township finances and, and putting this budget together. And one other piece that I meant to mention on the previous agenda item that I think bears noting is our bond rating was just assigned yesterday from Moody's. We got a AA2 rating, which is the same rating that we got a year ago when we went through this, which is an extremely high, excellent credit rating and is certainly a reflection of the financial health of the township. And, and they look at a lot of the internal accounting and procedures and methods that we follow to track the budget and all of the township's finances. And that's a big factor that goes into that credit rating. So that's another, again, a reflection of Rich and the Finance Department. So we're very happy with that credit rating, and that should get us a good interest rate on the bonds. Anyways, I digress. So back to the budget. So like I said, there's not a whole lot to highlight. I'll just, I'll hit a couple of what I view as the highlights of this budget that may be something different, you know, something new or different. Just overall, the general fund budget is a $14.3 million budget as proposed. This is about a 7% decrease from the 2025 budget. It's an over-million-dollar decrease. The biggest factor for that is in 2025, we had a budgeted grant and associated expense for the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program. So it did kinda skew the budget, where the 2025 budget was well in excess of $15 million, and now we're looking at 14.3. But I just wanted to highlight that. The budget does include one staffing change, which is the conversion of an existing part-time administrative position to full-time halfway through the year. So it's not a full year of that promote, or you know, expansion of that position. The, the budget allows for that to occur halfway through the year. The budget includes an additional $75,000 of transfer to the capital fund for the long-term replacement program funding that the board began last year. It includes an additional $100,000 of funding for the Lower Providence EMS. It includes an additional $25,000 for the Lower Providence Library. It reallocates money from the Liquid Fuels Fund into the general fund, $62,500 worth to pay for salt out of the general fund now, which essentially is adding more money into the roads by freeing up more money to be used for our annual road program, which has been kind of a multi-year effort that we've been making to increase the funding to the road program. And the other, the last highlight I'll mention, which is really the only new thing in this year's budget, it's a small number, but I think a critical and exciting item is the addition of $10,000 for a low-income critical repair program, which will provide some assistance through a third-party nonprofit partner to provide home repair costs for low-income residents of the township. Yeah, so you can keep going. Those are kind of my highlights. So we always like to show the breakdown of, of the township's taxes. And, and I think this is, the board has seen this, this figure a ton of times. But for the public's benefit, when you get your township tax bill, there's actually five specific township taxes that make up the total property tax bill of, of the township. There's the general fund portion, which accounts for about 60%, the emergency services portion, which accounts for about 13%, debt service, which is currently about 12%, library is 9%, and then parks and recreation is 6%. So there's a total of five individual millages that make up the total township millage. And then to represent what that total from the township accounts for, county-wide in terms of the total property taxes that our residents pay to all of the taxing entities, which there are four. The county has a property tax. They have a separate property tax for the county, for the Montgomery County Community College. And then there's the school district property tax. So the total amount of property taxes that our residents pay goes to those four separate entities. And of the total amount, the township's portion of the tax is approximately 8.5%. County's 11 and 1/2. The community college is 1%. And then the school district is the biggest piece by a significant margin at about 79%. So I think everybody in this room probably knows this, but we don't all share that money. So when, when people think like, I pay $6,000 in property taxes, it doesn't all go into one pot for us to share. It's separated. The payments are separated. We only get the township's portion of it. The school district gets their portion of it. We don't see any of that money. And then based on the, this is, this is showing the same breakdown, but instead of the percentages, it's the dollar amount based on the average assessed property in the township. So the average homeowner in the township would have a tax bill of $7,142. And of that amount, 609 is township-paid taxes. So that is what they pay to the township to cover all of the services that we provide. So the major decision point before you tonight. So the budget as proposed already includes and reflects a, a small increase in the general fund millage to fund it at 100% to basically fill that $47,000 gap that I talked about earlier. The tax increase needed to cover that comes out to about $4.61 per year on the average home in the township. The additional $25,000 to the library requires an additional $2.43 from the average property owner. And for the additional $100,000 to the EMS requires an added $9.73 to the average property owner. So those three changes are already built into the budget as proposed. What we are asking for the board's direction and, and decision on before we can advertise the budget is which option to select for the debt service millage increase. So this is the dedicated tax that will be used to pay off our, the township's debt. So the, the new bonds that you just authorized, the ordinance for the borrowing, will need a dedicated millage so that the township can collect the money so that we can pay off that debt each year. And the way that that works is...
Excuse me, EJ, before we move on to the debt service, there was a small, but a significant, but not financially big movement on the millage for the EMS from 2025 proposed for 2026 that was increased by transferring from the general fund and...
Oh, yes.
Could you just go through that briefly?
Sure. So up until last year, there was a cap set by the state in state law on the total millage for the emergency services fund, and it was capped at a half a mil. Towards the end of last year, 2024, the state amended those caps specifically for the collar counties of Philadelphia to increase it from a half a mil to five mils.
When you say half a mil, you mean millage, not money?
Correct, 0.5 mils. A mil is the equivalent of $1 for every $1,000 of assessed property value. So for the last several years, the township's millage rate for the emergency services fund was set at that 0.5 mil cap. And then last year, the state gave us the ability to increase it to five mils. So prior to that, the way that fund worked was the millage was set at the maximum. That generated a certain dedicated amount of funding for that fund, but that was not enough to cover all of the costs coming out, all of the expenses coming out of that fund, because that fund covers all of our contributions to the fire company, to the ambulance, the township's emergency management, and fire marshal departments. So what we were doing was, in addition to that dedicated tax, which wasn't enough, we were then transferring money out of the general fund into that fund to cover the gap. Now that the state has raised the cap for us, we no longer need to do that. So what's also built into the budget is an adjustment of those millages, which is basically a net zero impact on the tax bill, but a reduction in the general fund millage equal to an increase in the EMS fund millage so that we no longer have to do the inter-fund transfers. So that, that fund will be fully funded through a dedicated tax without having to rely on a transfer from the general fund anymore. This, what's shown on this slide represents just the increase to add $100,000 of funding to the EMS. Does that make sense?
Can you just tell us how much we have in the debt service and why, you know, we're gonna break up the percentages here?
How much we have?
Yeah, yeah. Is there any funding in that debt service pot yet?
So we have an existing millage that's being used already to cover our existing debt payments.
Okay.
But we will need more, because we're gonna be taking on more debt in, in what we currently bring in. And that service tax is not enough to cover the new debt that we're about to take on. But the way that debt works is, we're gonna issue the bonds at the very beginning of 2026. Our first payment will be due in 2026, but the first year, it's a, it's a partial payment. So the full payment will not actually kick in until 2027. So the board essentially has the option to split the, the increase over the course of two years, or, or to do it all now. So what we've presented you, based on the feedback that we got from the budget workshops, is a series of options to basically cover 70% of the cost of that debt now, which you would then have to do the other 30% next year, 85% of it now. You would then have to do the other 15% next year. Or 100% of it now, which would mean you wouldn't have to do another adjustment of the tax next year. next year. The one caveat I will say with all of these figures is that we don't, won't know exactly what the amount needed is going to be until we issue the bond, go out to auction and issue the bonds because it's subject to fluctuations in the, in the market. So these are based on projections from our financial advisor for an eight million dollar borrowing based on the bond market this week, which is the most up-to-date projections we could get. But there is a chance that it could fluctuate a little bit and likely will a little bit, either up or down over the next month. So what I'm saying is if you were to choose, say, the one hundred percent option now so that you wouldn't have to do a tax increase next year, there's a chance that that could actually be slightly too much and then you would do a slight reduction next year, or it could very slightly not be enough and then you would have to do a very small increase next year, just based on the actual rates we get once we issue the bonds.
When will we, when will we know the exact amount of the borrowing? And when do we, when do we like vote to finalize the exact millage?
I believe it's two weeks from today, December fourth. It will be the day that the, so the ordinance will be advertised. So, yeah, we'll, we'll actually be able to update it prior to the budget adoption.
So if we picked one of these, you know, it might vary by a dollar or two.
Right, exactly.
And we could do the fine tuning on December fourth?
Yeah, and you won't be voting to adopt the budget until December eighteenth.
Okay, okay.
So, yeah. There are limits to how much the budget can be adjusted from when it's advertised, but I would be very surprised if any changes that would be needed would rise to the, it's something like twenty-five percent of any line item or ten percent of any major category. I don't anticipate we'll be seeing those kinds of fluctuations. Yeah, the morning of December fourth is when we'll have the auction, the live auction for the bonds that lasts about ten minutes, Rich? Because then we'll fill in the exact, we'll, we'll have the amortization schedule prepared for that night when we ask you to adopt the ordinance. So the, the options, like I said, I, I mean, the board could really kind of pick any number, but these were the options that we presented to you. There is a fourth option that's represented by that asterisk in between the eighty-five and one hundred percent options. And that's what's on the screen now. So this option, as opposed to making a decision based on a percentage, is to try to target a specific dollar amount of a tax increase. So using a target sixty-dollar overall tax increase for the average property owner, which would be the combination of the debt service, the general fund, the library and the EMS, that would cover ninety-two percent of the debt service this year. So then you would need to do about eight, an eight percent increase next year to cover the rest. So if the board is more inclined to think of it in a dollar figure as opposed to, you know, as a dollar, because most of the general public don't really understand what a mil or a percentage of a mil means to them, how it impacts them. So we like to represent it as an actual dollar amount because that's much more relatable.
EJ, could you tell us what the average increased dollar amount was last year?
It was about sixty-one dollars, sixty-one and change.
Okay, thank you.
That's actually pretty amazing because with inflation, this is actually lower and we're taking on a new building. So.
Right.
Very good financial management.
I'm not sure how inflation, we're increasing the taxes ten percent. That's higher than inflation. If you want to go to the general fund, it's lower, but if you add it all together, it's quite a bit higher, has been every year.
Just to explain my comment, I was looking at sixty-one dollars using just standard discounted cash flow analysis, using inflation as a discount rate, it would be lower than this sixty. That's all I was saying. Or this sixty would be lower than that number.
Are you talking about the current tax?
I'm just talking about the absolute tax rate that we have now. The absolute increase this year is lower than the absolute increase last year if you account for inflation. I didn't mean to.
Or you're talking about the, the increase is less than inflation. The increase from last year to this year is less than inflation.
It's, it's lower on a percentage, on absolute, on a inflation-adjusted and on a percentage basis.
Well, we're just talking about option four right now, so we haven't made any decisions yet, so.
I'm just trying to understand. It's, it's higher than inflation no matter what.
Okay, understood. Okay, go ahead, EJ, move on.
Um, I don't know that there's, I mean, we, we can just kind of take a look at each option to see what the dollar, the total dollar amount impact is. And again, all of these options already, they include, and, and they're shown in the charts, the, the breakdown on each page, but they include the general fund, the library and the EMS increases that we already discussed. So for those three categories, the numbers are the same on all the slides for all the options. The only thing that is different is the debt service. So the lowest option that, that we're presenting tonight, and again, this is, you know, it's really up to the board, what your comfort level is, but to essentially cover seventy-five or seventy percent of the new debt costs would require, using the dollar figures, a thirty-two dollar and seventy-seven cent increase on the debt service, which would be a total tax increase of forty-nine dollars and fifty-four cents. But that would cover about seventy percent of the debt. Next year, you would have to cover the other thirty percent. And it's not really, it wouldn't really be, I, I just want to make sure we're clear that if you don't do it all tonight, it's not really going to be a discussion or a, you know, a, a negotiation next year. You, you will have really no choice but to cover the rest of that. Otherwise, you know, we would jeopardize potentially defaulting on our debt by not having enough money to pay for it. Just so we know, if you commit to anything less than one hundred percent tonight, you're, you're basically automatically committing to making up the difference next year. So the eighty-five percent level is, is just a little bit below the, the sixty-dollar target number. This would cover eighty-five percent of the debt and the total tax increase would be fifty-six dollars and fifty-seven cents, again, on the average assessed property. It will cover one hundred percent of the debt based on the current bond projections would be a total increase of sixty-three dollars and sixty cents. And then this fourth option, which we already presented is, as opposed to starting with the percentage and then breaking it down for this one, we started with the dollar figure and then backed into what percentage that would be. So targeting the sixty-dollar average increase, annual increase would cover ninety-two percent of the debt.
And would it be fair to say, EJ, that the other non-debt service items in this year's twenty-twenty-six proposed budget are low, as you put out, highly efficient or some, something to that degree? It's, it's a very low increase so that our expectations for next year, well, for twenty-twenty-seven, although we can't see that far, would be likely they're going to be going up on the general fund, et cetera, because.
I would agree.
We don't know how much, but we're going to get an increase just on the base numbers.
Correct.
And so anything to that, we would also be adding debt service if this wasn't fulfilled at a hundred percent this year.
That's correct. Yeah, though, though, I mean, the general comment, I'll say, to just kind of elaborate on that is the majority of our general fund is, is of the fourteen point three million dollar general fund is, is personnel costs, salaries, benefits, pension, you know, healthcare, all of those things for township employees. That, that makes up the vast majority of the general fund. And seventy-five percent of our employees are covered by collective bargaining agreements. So their, their annual increases are, are built in over multiple years. We did benefit from this year by having a higher than normal rate of turnover, which means we hired new employees at lower rates, but those rates do go up exponentially in the first five years of the contract. So it was very good timing for this year, considering we needed a bigger increase on the debt service, but we will see bigger increases in personnel costs per the collective bargaining agreements over the next two to three years.
And we should expect some nominal increase in insurance and pension costs as well.
Yes, yes.
Based on the increased cost of service.
Yeah, we did, we did really well on our insurance, well, on our property and liability insurance, we got a decrease, workers' comp, I think was a very small increase, healthcare, which is, I mean, probably the single biggest, you know, item in our budget, other than salaries, that goes up every year. And, 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 you know, seven, six percent, you know, on two million dollars is a significant amount of money.
So that general fund piece, the people person, portion, the eighty percent, guessing six to eight percent of an increase would not be unusual in overall costs.
Yeah.
Just as a general, you could say five, but it's.
Right. When you add in all of the kind of ancillary.
Okay, so you're looking at that increase.
Every year.
Yeah.
And on those, the salaries for the general fund, they're primarily the police and public works.
Those are, that's seventy-five percent of the township personnel, yeah.
And then I think the average contract, not looking at benefits, but the, the contract percentage increase each year is like two or three percent, something like that?
It's three percent, it's, it's, it's four percent for police and three percent for, for everybody else.
Okay.
Roughly, you know, generally speaking.
Yep. Thank you.
And that's based on the negotiated agreement, bargaining unit agreement.
Correct. So that, that, I mean, that does conclude the presentation is really just kind of questions and then, you know, whoever wants to be the first to, to suggest a, a number for debt service. Essentially what we are seeking from the board tonight is authorization to advertise the budget as presented with the selection of X option for the debt service millage is our request.
So I will start with my colleagues here first. I'm hospitable.
I, I, I'll eat off. I mean, I, I would, just looking at the fact that we came in under, under budget on the bids and, you know, there had been some discussion around keeping it close to sixty dollars. Going with the hundred percent is like sixty-three dollars, which is really close. I would just lean towards doing the hundred percent budgets or, uh, level or hundred percent debt service level be, you know, my thought process there.
Can you go back to the pie chart again, please?
Which one?
Yeah, so this is where we are currently, correct? The six oh nine point forty-nine. So we're just a small piece of that pie of the total property taxes. Eight percent, yeah, the next one shows eight point five percent. Okay, okay. So I think this is a good pie chart and the next one for our communities to see the significance here of the increase or not the increase or anything like that, so.
And, and one, and one point I will make to that is, you know, for any option that you select tonight, we could obviously quickly do the math to see.
Okay.
Based on our increase, what increase in the percentage of the total that would result in. So like we might go from eight and a half to nine or nine and a half. We could easily do that math.
Okay.
But that's, that would be based on the assumption that none of those other three taxing entities changed their taxes. And we know.
No Montgomery County.
We know that the county and the school district are both also proposing tax increases.
That's correct.
I don't know what the amounts are. Still enough of my time focusing on this unit of government, so I don't pay a ton of attention to what they're doing, but I know that they are.
Montgomery County just advertised, so if you, if anyone's interested in seeing that, you can do that.
And the school districts have a different fiscal year, right?
Okay.
EJ, I know that, you know, sixty dollars or sixty-three dollars is about a ten percent increase in, you know, our, our piece of the pie, but that doesn't mean that we have a ten percent increase in our, like, ongoing operating expenses. Like our increase this year is much less than that. It's been close to inflation, I think.
It's, I think last year was slightly below inflation and that's just my recollection based on the discussion at, at this meeting last year. This year, we're, we're significantly below it because, well, it's actually our, our operating, overall, overall operating budgets decreased compared from twenty-twenty-five to twenty-twenty-six.
The reason it looks so, it seems so high, like you can have a headline, hey, increase is ten percent, but that's because this is the only dial we have to turn to, to adjust it, but we're operating pretty leanly, I believe.
That's a great point and, um, give me one second. Even if we, you just focus on the general fund portion of the budget, and this year's not a good year because it's such a small amount, but say the general fund tax has to go up ten percent to cover the budget or to cover the deficit, that doesn't mean the general fund is going up ten percent. The property tax only accounts for, I think it's less than twenty-five percent of our total revenue. I don't have the exact number in front of me, but it's about, for twenty-twenty-six, it's about three and a half million out of fourteen point three million. So whatever, yeah, it's, it's just under a quarter, it's just under twenty-five percent. So that's, that is the only lever that we have in terms of, in terms of generating additional revenue. So, you know, whatever the percent increase is in that property tax does not necessarily, does not definitively mean that the entire budget's going up that same percent.
Yeah, because isn't it true that really it's the earned income tax, you know, on, on the people that are bringing in earned income that's funding most of our budget?
It's about fifty percent of our revenue.
Okay. Thank you.
And we, and we have no control over increasing that.
Yeah.
But the earned income is funding fifty percent of the budget, but not, not fifty percent of the increase. That's coming from property taxes.
Correct, because the majority of the increases is for the debt service, which the, the earned income tax doesn't fund that at all. Yeah, that's really only funded through the, the property tax.
I'm just pointing out that the increase really is going to affect property owners, not people who are working, not, not people's incomes on their wages.
Yeah, I must say, in this budget, we spent a lot of time just trying to make sure that we have the community protected, whether it's police, whether it's fire and ambulance. So there, there are needs for fire and also for ambulance service. So I'm glad we were able to incorporate this into our budget plan this year because we definitely want our township residents to continue to be safe and as such. So I, I think that's important to add to this as well. So I, I, my preference would be the, the one hundred percent so we don't have to increase debt service and also the general fund next year because that may give us a higher increase than, than this year.
Well, I was looking at option four, the, the ninety-two percent, sixty dollars. And, you know, it, it's like, how much do we discuss between sixty dollars and sixty-three point sixty? You know, that to me is the, is the two options is, that's where I'm going. Either the ninety-two percent debt service or the hundred percent debt service. And it's like, you know, there, there is very much a side to me that says, get it paid now, understanding that, you know, the reality is we're going to have to, with the salaries increasing next year, we're going to have to deal with that too. So there's, you know, reason to pay it a hundred percent this year.
I, I would, I mean, the hundred percent is necessary and not debatable in terms of whether we, all is being debated is whether it's all going to be done this year or part this year and part next year, but it's not a question of whether it's going to be some other number. The only influence on picking a lower percentage is reducing the burden on the taxpayers this year, knowing that they're going to have to. year, knowing that they're gonna have to pay it next year, but they'll have one less year of that higher payment. And, you know, to some small degree, that might be beneficial to them.
I'm thinking we need to talk to the county and the school district, too, 'cause then that would really be beneficial for our, for our community members, so.
I was gonna say, if we can get some of the education funding sorted out at the state level, that would reduce it.
Absolutely.
You know, just based on hearing everything, I would just make the motion to approve this at the 100% level.
Okay, I will second. Any public comment? Any further board comment? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Oppose?
No.
Okay. Or one? Or one? Okay, all right. Okay, moving on, thank y'all for that. Moving on to new business.
She didn't say a word.
What's up? We're good?
Rich didn't say a word.
Should we allow Rich to say something before I move on to new business? Okay. So, before I move on to new business, I just wanna say thank you to Rich and the staff for putting this all together. As many know, I don't like all these numbers, but they have explained this to me multiple times and very patiently, so I appreciate this. Thank you.
Just a clarification, we just voted to approve 100% increase on the debt service, correct?
This is just the advertisement of the budget, so right now, we're gonna advertise at the 100% debt service level.
So now we're gonna vote on advertising, correct? We did not vote then, if I heard that correctly.
No, we, we just did.
You just voted to advertise it in that way. So the actual vote will be the second meeting.
Right.
No, I didn't mean to approve the budget, I meant, I thought I just heard a vote on which of the four we were selecting.
Only just to advertise it at that, at that level.
At that level.
But you could still make changes between now and the vote in December.
Okay.
He, he, yeah, he, the vote was to advertise it based on the 100% debt servicing.
Right. All right, moving on to new business, next is approval of Bowman Addendum for Services. This is the transportation impact fee update, and Paul Donnelly has more.
Thank you. So as you know, over the last couple of years, since it's been about two years that we have been in the process of updating our transportation impact fee, this is the fee that's charged essentially to developers to account for increased volume on our roads, so it's essentially used to make improvements to our infrastructure as we get more development. The last time the impact fee was updated was about 15-ish years ago, maybe 14 years ago, so it's due for an update to kind of keep up with the rising costs of construction. It's kind of a long process, generally speaking, you first do a land use assumptions report, which you all voted to approve sometime last year, or sometime earlier this year, after which our, our engineers will use that land use assumptions report, so that's looking at what we are assuming the growth is gonna be like in Lower Providence Township for the next 10 years. They'll use that data to then go out and do traffic counts to see what improvements they're gonna recommend that we make over the next period, and that's called a roadway sufficiency analysis. Previously, we had two zones in the township, and each, those two zones had two different fees attached to them, and through the process of doing the, the roadway sufficiency analysis, Bowman realized that the fees have, if they were to charge the fees based on the outlined cost analysis, they would be exorbitant, and so we have to kind of do a recalculation and go down to one zone as opposed to, to two, and this is essentially an extension, though, of, it's gonna extend past what our initial agreement was, so this addendum is, is basically allowing us to continue with Bowman to make those changes, and hopefully come out with something that is, is more fair as we go into the next stage of the process.
And that would pass legal muster.
And that would let, pass legal muster.
Because the, the preliminary fees based on the existing two zones would certainly subject us to some legal challenges if we were to adopt them.
I guess this didn't come out in the initial analysis, that this was gonna happen, where, like, they could have suggested do it as one zone, and I'm showing ignorance of the process here.
I think this is prob, this probably is the initial analysis. I think usually you don't see such a dramatic change, from my conversations with our engineering folks, they, you know, I don't think you usually see quite the degree of change that they're seeing, so. It's not uncommon, as you update your transportation impact fee, to change where your zones are over the years. I think over the course of, you know, the last 30 years, we've changed it almost every time, sometimes going from four zones to two zones, from changing those two zones, so it's, we've changed it in the past.
What I'll say to just kind of elaborate on, on what Paul said, is, as he was explaining, there's kind of three main components of this process, the land use assumptions report, which was completed, the roadway sufficiency analysis, which was the stage where now, essentially, they completed that, and that's what resulted in these exorbitant fees. So they basically have to go back and do that phase of the study again, which is the need, which is added scope of work, 'cause there's, there's a lot of work that goes into that, and hence the need for additional funding. They wouldn't really have known that until they kind of completed the step, second step of the process, but now they need to go back and do it again, based on a redrawn zone of the township.
And I don't wanna draw this out, like, unnecessarily, I'm just trying to understand, like, if the analysis said the fees need to be X, you know, and X is too high, we're saying we're gonna redo this analysis to make it lower? Like, would that be valid? You know, if the analysis says it needs to be this number?
We're, we're going to look at all of the factors and all the data that went into the analysis to make sure that the conclusions that were reached would, would hold up in court. Very often, when you're doing this type of analysis, or whether you're doing a sewer rate increase, or sewer tapping fee increase, you have to make sure all the data is, is appropriate, because sometimes the data can get skewed and can really alter the outcome, so I think that's all part of the analysis that we're doing right now. And very often, as Paul just said, this is kind of the initial analysis, very often the initial will produce some unusual numbers, which appears to have happened here, so we're gonna, we're gonna dig down a little deeper, so.
Thank you.
Just for the benefit of the public, the traffic impact fees are fees that developers pay when they're putting in a project, a house, or a store, or a shopping mall, or anything else, and what impact that will have on the roads that it is abutting, so that there's a traffic impact, which they are required then to pay to, to help pay for those road improvements that would become necessary. That's just, that's the topic we're discussing. So my question would be, we have two zones now, and we're talking about exorbitant increases, are there two different rates now for each zone, and are both of those exorbitant? Or are they differently exorbitant?
I would say differently exorbitant, in terms of what they just did, so there's two different zones, they're both exorbitant, but one in particular is, you know, a double or triple the other one, so that's part of the issue, based on, based on the current analysis.
And so, because we have two zones, why would we think, if, what we're gonna do is try to blend the, the cost of zone one with zone two to, to lower the rate in, in absolute on zone one?
I think, in essence, yes.
Well, it's, it's actually going to reduce the total land area of the township that's covered by a zone, so I think there's, there's a maximum size per zone of, I think, seven square miles.
Seven square miles.
So two zones cover 14 square miles of the township. Going down to one zone will only now cover seven square miles of the township, but it can be drawn strategically to essentially cover areas for potential development or redevelopment. So it would exclude areas that are fully built out, that we're not gonna see any development, and I think the way the old zones were drawn were from a while ago, when the, the development trends in the township were different than they are now. That's why the changes were so exorbitant, and just, and I don't remember which zone specifically, but one of them, for the fees, and the ways that, the way the fees are assessed is it's a per peak hour trip that's generated, so there's like, traffic tables, it says like, X development will generate 25 additional trips during the peak hour, so whatever the traffic impact fee is, you multiply that by the number of trips, and that's what the developer owes. For one of the zones, the fee went from like, around a thousand dollars to about $18,000.
Oh, wow.
So there were some adjustments that could be made to bring them down, but not, not enough, which is why we kind of have to go back and redraw quite a bit.
And, and are these results somewhat impacted by the amount of traffic already on the roads?
So the, the intention of the traffic impact fee is only to account for new traffic, but it is taking, so it's using, excuse me, so what they first do is part of the roadway sufficiency analysis, they do existing traffic counts, and then they, I think they basically compare what they expect to see the growth as, so they kind of use the existing traffic counts as today, and then they compare what they expect to see, and that's how they come up with their calculation.
And, and the way the actual dollar mile is, it's, it's kind of complicated, but basically, every, it's all based on intersections. All of the major intersections are assigned kind of like service levels, in terms of how well or poorly traffic moves through those intersections, so they're all assigned a pre-development grade of service level, and then based on the build-out analysis that's done as part of the first phase of this project, they then say, okay, this is what the service level is now, if we get this additional traffic, the service level is going to go to what? How, how much worse is it gonna get? And then they plan for capital improvements to re, that would need to be made at that intersection, to return it to the pre-development service level, and then they attach a dollar figure to those capital improvements. They add all of those up that are within the zone, and divide it by the total number of trips that would be generated by all of the development proposed, and that's how you get your per-trip dollar figure. Billy, did I get that right, Tim?
That's pretty good, EJ, yes.
I don't, I don't wanna.
All right, we're feeding this horse to death.
Yeah, sorry, nerded out a little bit. I'm having fun.
It does raise another question in my, it, it does raise another question, as we go through this process, will the board be able to see what the map is of what's in scope prior, you know, prior to them going to the subsequent steps? 'Cause I'd hate for this analysis to say, you know, these roads are included, these roads are excluded, and have them continue with the analysis without us being able to see, you know, what's included and excluded, so that we can, you know, say, yeah, it makes sense.
Isn't there a group that discusses all this?
Yeah, there's, so there's the traffic, the traffic, transportation impact fee committee, so they, they meet at each relevance part of the stage to review what the engineers are recommending, to then also give feedback, so that group is made up of both professionals who work in and live in the township, as well as kind of laypeople in terms of, you know, professional, to kind of give their feedback, and we've met a couple times, and, and they, their feedback has been really valuable for our engineering folks, 'cause they've given good feedback in saying, like, I think you need to focus on this intersection more, because I drive by it every day, you know, as an example, I think.
I believe we approved, we approved the people on this group, right?
Correct.
A while ago, okay.
The Autobahn Paulings was actually one of those intersections that we said we gotta focus on, so.
Right.
And to answer your question, Supervisor Knight, for each of the major phases of this study, it goes through essentially a public hearing, approval by this advisory committee, and then approval by this board.
Okay.
We already did that with the land use assumptions report, that will happen again with the roadway sufficiency analysis.
And then, early on, we'll be able to see what that new map is? I'd just like to get my eyes on it, you know, in a, in the formal process, before they go too far.
I don't think there's any issue with that.
They're all public meetings, so I can, I can make sure I, I provide the map as we get it, before it becomes kind of, before it comes to you.
Okay.
Yeah. That's not a problem, yeah.
But that map would come to this board before they make the final decisions?
So generally, the process would work with, like, the, the, the map would get workshopped within the group, they would approve the map, the map would then come to you, to get final approval for their whole study, which would include the map.
And would include all of the, all five tasks? All four tasks here?
Well, the, the, each task, so there, that map that you're talking about is one of the tasks.
Which, which task number, do you know?
The roadway sufficiency analysis task number.
Is it earlier?
I think it's two or three.
Task three.
Task three, okay. Okay, thanks.
That, that, that map was originally done in task one, and they're gonna redo it now in task three, right?
Correct, yeah.
The, the map, basically, they, they utilize the existing map from the last time the study was done, 15 years ago. They, they, typically, you try not to change the zones, because it does become an accounting nightmare for our finance department.
He's shaking, no, he's, nothing to him.
But in this case, we really don't have a choice. If we wanna proceed with this study and get a new fee in place, we, we can no longer stick with the existing zones.
It's just an added benefit to make it more difficult for Rich.
Right.
I'll leave it alone after this. So I see there's been seven meetings of nine, so there are two more, I'm assuming, and then they wanna add an additional three, so this looks like it's maybe 18 months away?
I think it'll be sooner than that. Our hope is probably aiming more for 12.
It's been two already, right?
It's been two already. It's supposed to be about 18 months in total, but due to some delays with the land use assumption report, and then this discussion about needing to go down to one zone, it has dramatically elongated the process.
Okay, so any development that took place in the next couple of years would not be impacted by this change?
It will only be impacted by the change if, after you all vote for it, and I don't know if there's any specifics about, land development's already been submitted, I don't know how that works.
I don't believe any new land development is subject to a new fee until after it's adopted.
Until after it's adopted, right.
All right. The only, the only time there's an interim fee is the first time you're doing this, the study, the inaugural study. When the process starts, you can, you can implement a temporary fee, or any new development that comes in between the beginning of the study and the adoption of the plan, but that's only when you're doing it for the first time. For any new development that comes in, it's still subject to our existing 14, 15-year-old traffic impact fees, and the, the two zones.
Okay. Okay, all right. So I like to make a motion to approve the Bowman Addendum for Services with, which is the transportation impact fee update, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any public comment? Any further board comment?
Just, just one, I mean, is it, is the additional fees associated with this step about $35,000?
I think roughly, but yeah, in the 25 to $35,000 range, yes, there's a couple not to exceed levels for each of the phases, yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Next is the consideration of local share account grant applications, and Paul, you're on again.
Get to hear a lot from me. I'm actually gonna kick it off to Chief, who's gonna, so, the local share account statewide grant is an annual grant application that, that we generally try to apply for, because it's kind of a catch-all, you can kind of apply for anything that, that you're looking to do within the, within your municipality, up to, I think, a million dollars. So we've had success in the past with some of these LSA grant applications, some police vehicles, we had a really, really successful grant application two years ago to get about a million dollars to improve our stormwater systems, which is great, and we're currently working on actually, like, launching that entire project, that'll, that'll be very impactful. Our applications last year, generally speaking, it takes about a year before you find out if you're successful. So we applied November of last year, and usually we'll, we would have found out by now, which we have not yet about the success or non-success of those applications, we expect to hear now at the beginning of next year. So we are proposing three different grant applications, which are the three resolutions before you tonight. The first one is a simulator that the police are looking to do, the second one is, is basically supporting our Redtail Park redevelopment project. We are currently, as Tim can attest, we're working through Phase One, I believe the last meeting you voted to authorize for the bid to go out for that, which we're, we're still putting together, so this would essentially, we're essentially applying to get enough funding to cover the rest of that redevelopment. We articulated in the grant application that this is a phase project, so if you can't give us all the money we need, we can really use anything that the, the state would, would be, would provide for us. The third resolution is a, is essentially the exact same application that we put in for last year, and it's for capital improvement to one for last year, and it's for capital improvement to one of the public works facilities. We're recommending to apply for that again because we have not heard back on whether that application was successful, and so we're hoping, obviously, if that application is successful and we find out in early 2026, we, we won't, we'll kind of let them know to, to, or this application, but if not, we would like to make sure that's kind of in the pipeline to reapply for that. And Chief, I don't know if you want to speak a little bit about the Milo simulator?
Sure, so we are looking to purchase a use-of-force simulator, and basically what it is, it's a, it, it runs police officers through, police officers through various scenarios, shoot, don't shoot scenarios, de-escalation scenarios, and basically it's a big screen, and you play videos on it, and, and it just, officers have to encounter different scenarios and work through it. So it's, provides the most realistic use-of-force training that really you can do.
Are some of those visual screens like Pebble Beach or?
There's no golf on this one.
Oh, well, I don't know.
Then you should vote no.
We can, I'm, I'm, I'm open to suggestions.
Actually, not knowing what the Milo Range Pro Simulator was, I Googled it, and the first item is foresight golf simulator.
Can I ask a question, sorry, I should have asked Chief this before the meeting. Is this something, is this like a permanent, like, screen structure, or is this like something that you move around?
No, you can move it around, yeah.
But would the intent, because there, there's a room at Eight Hundred Adams labeled as a simulator room that doesn't really have any renovations other than just, you know, walls, is, would that be the intent to you, if we got this grant to put this in that room?
Correct.
And seriously, is this just software, or is there hardware associated with it? Like, what, what is it that would be getting?
Yeah, so it's, it's everything, it's all included, it's every, it's the, the projection, it's the screens, it's, it's, everything's all included, the software, yeah, so you utilize your own equipment, and there's different adapters that you put on, like your handgun, taser, that type of thing.
I see, and then, do you know if there's ongoing annual license fees for this?
There's going to be some support, sure, there'll be some support cost.
But that'd just go into the operational budget later, this is just for a grant application?
Yes, it's a very expensive piece of equipment.
Thank you.
Great, I would just say, absolutely, I mean, that, anything you can do to have a more, a better trained force, so they're prepared for the situations maybe they've never encountered before, and I, I think it's a wonderful idea, so.
Thank you.
It saves lives.
And I'll just again say that we, we're applying this year, November 2025, we don't expect to hear back until this time next year, hopefully, so it's obviously like a long-term, these are all things we don't immediately need.
I think we've been successful with many of the grant applications.
So far.
That you have placed, so this is great news for the township residents, for sure, we're enhancing our township, so, which is great.
All right, are you, you're good? Okay, wonderful. I'd like to make a motion to approve the local share account grant applications as discussed, there's three resolutions, so Resolution 2025 dash thirty-six, Resolution 2025 dash thirty-seven, and also Resolution 2025 dash thirty-eight, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any public comment, any further board comment? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries. All right, next is the consideration of auction proposal from Guyer Auction Companies for excess township property, Township Manager EJ Mentri has more on that.
Thank you, Madam Chair, I'll keep this brief, this is a proposal to contract with this auction company to help us try to sell and generate any profit that we possibly can from furniture that it, furniture that we essentially inherited at Eight Hundred Adams Avenue, the building, the unoccupied portions of the building came fully furnished, and we, as kind of part of a cost-saving effort with the project, we're going to reuse a lot of that existing furniture, but there's way more than what we need. So instead of paying the contractor to dispose of it for us, we want to bring in an auctioneer to conduct a public auction. The contract is very simple, essentially, it costs us no money upfront, the auctioneer gets twenty-five percent of any, any proceeds that the sale generates, and then any of the buyers would be responsible for coming, packing up, picking up their, their purchased property, so we want to be responsible for that. And our goal really is to get this auction scheduled between Thanksgiving and Christmas, kind of on the earlier end of that window, to try to get as much of this moved out of the building as possible before the renovation work starts.
You can talk to it a little more, EJ, but it's not just furniture we're auctioning off, a lot of this is brand-new furniture.
Yeah, that's a great point, there's.
A big silver lining to this building purchase.
Yeah, yeah, and, and, you know, there's, generally speaking, there's not much of a market for office furniture because office occupancy levels are sold down from COVID, but because of the quality of this furniture and the age of the majority of it, we have heard from some interested buyers that there actually is some interest in it. It's, the furniture primarily consists of cubicle systems, some of them have never been used, they, you know, there was a tenant in that building that, whose lease began right before COVID hit, fully furnished the building with, with these really Class A cubicle systems, never even got to the point of fully occupying the building before the pandemic hit, and then they, they went virtual and never came back, so some of them have literally never, never been used.
And just, the process we're going through is really required, we aren't permitted to do this in a private sale operation, correct?
That is correct, disposing of municipal property, even though we didn't purchase this initially, we did purchase it when we bought the building, we're not allowed to just sell it, we have to go through this type of process. It doesn't necessarily need to be put out the bid, but as long as there is a process that is open to all members of the public, and we take the best, the best prices that are offered on each one, we're complying with the law.
Thank you, I think, having said that, if there was a charity, a registered charity that had some need of furniture, that could make a case for it, we would be able to donate to that charity.
We would, after we offer everything for auction, after it's been properly advertised, after everyone has had the opportunity to come and bid on some of this property, or all of this property, what's left over will in many ways be disposed of, will be thrown out, the auction company will take it away, and then they'll dispose of it. So if there are charities, or if there are other organizations, then we can, we can work that out with them.
Maybe we could touch base at some point with the Alliance, or I don't know, other organizations, because maybe their, this furniture is so new, it's really nice, so. Normally, I would say it's tough to get rid of office furniture, but in this case, it's in great condition, so we give it a try inside the township first.
Just going to say, in Lower Providence, businesses could easily bid on this, too, if they wanted.
Everyone can, yes.
So it's open to anybody.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to approve the auction proposal from Guyer Auction Companies for the excess township property, is there a second?
Second.
Any public comment? You have to come up and state your name, no, no, you have to come up.
I took my break.
Yeah, because it's videotaped, so we need to hear you.
I apologize.
That's okay.
Ray Lotfi, I was suggesting put him in Facebook because township people definitely would be interested.
Yeah, once, once we know what the dates of the auction are, we absolutely, we'll put it on the township website and Facebook page as well to notify everybody, yeah, thanks, Ray.
Thank you. All right, any further board comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, motion carries. Okay, some announcements, so the Board of Supervisors, we're still looking for qualified residents interested in serving on the township, various boards and commissions, details and instructions on submitting a letter of interest and resume can be found on the township website, lowerprovidence.org. These are volunteers, it doesn't really take a lot of your time, most of the boards and commissions meet once a month, if that, so definitely consider joining one of those, and you, you'll be a part of what's happening in the township, it's fulfilling work, for sure. Our next tree lighting, lighting in Winter Wonderland, this is the seventeenth annual, will be on February, not February, this is Friday, Friday, December fifth, at Eagleville Park, and all the activities and festivities start at six-thirty, with the Santa arriving via a fire truck at seven PM, and there will be Santa also in Winter Wonderland, which is at the Bocchi Courts. We continue with our annual holiday dinner, which is hosted by the township and Chadwick's Restaurant, this will be held on Wednesday, December seventeenth, at, from four-thirty to seven-thirty, and this is open to all township residents, the last few years have been wonderful, the food is, is pretty tasty, so come and join, tell your friends, it's free, and to register, go to lptrec.com, or you can call at six-one-zero-six-three-five-three-five-four-three. Sound like advertisement here.
Can I make a comment?
Absolutely.
It is, spaces are going fast, so please, if you're interested, you need to register, you can't just show up, but please register as quickly as possible.
And so you can register to come in person, or you can also register for takeout, so if you don't want to stay, so they do provide takeouts as well. All right, Planning Commission meeting is November twenty-fourth at seven PM, zoning hearing board is November twenty-fifth at seven PM, we have the Human Relations Commission, which is December third at six-thirty PM, and also the Administrative Office will be closed November twenty-seventh and twenty-eighth for Thanksgiving holiday, so I wish you all enjoy your time with friends and family, and thank them, and eat well as well. So now I, I open the floor for Curtis to the floor, you can come up, state your name, not to exceed three minutes per person, and the Board of Supervisors can speak on behalf, not behalf, or react to that, whatever you say, now or later, so please come up.
Ray Lotfi, Lower Providence Township, I make comments, and I'm sure this is not negative, it's positive, because I'm supportive of the subject that I want to talk about, but I'm surfacing the deficiency. The subject I'm talking about, contamination of the American Water System, which took over Audubon, I have been communicating them with a long time, and they actually had a presentation in here, and I talked multiple of times, what is your plan to take away the organic chemical PFAC and thing related to that? They have talked about everything except no plan, no objective, nothing about what are they going to do? And according to EPA, twenty-two, which was published in twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-nine, US companies, water companies has to get rid of this organic chemical material. And last week, I had a conversation with them, so as you know, that if you're Lower Providence Township, they came and replaced the hot, the water meters, so that they are able to read the water they consume from their office, that means they're saving labor force, but then they haven't done nothing, and they never answered the subject related to the organic chemical water. I also did a research about the Sewer Authority, which is south of our township, they are, they take away organic chemical material. If they are able to take away the organic chemical material, that means the American Water Company has to be able to do that. And I went to their webpage, they only posted two places, Audubon and Norristown, the water level and chemical, which is actually is twenty-twenty-four, and I talked with the American Water, Audubon used to give us quarterly water report. These guys, now we are the month of eleven of the year, they have not published anything, or they have not given us anything about what is their plan, what is the level? When you go to grocery store, you pick up the best one, you don't pick up the average one. The contamination level, we do not meet the minimum EPA requirement, but that shouldn't be the subject, we should, the subject should be significantly lower than that. And then now twenty-twenty-nine, somebody comes out, nothing was done, so my suggestion, first of all, I'm requesting the supervisor have the representative of American Water Company come and quarterly, and give a report on what are they going to do. I would be glad to support and help, I have expertise in that, I used to measure the quality of water weekly on the company that I was working with. This is a serious matter, and it is organic, if you boil the water, still do not disappear, and you inject it in your body. And please don't misunderstand me, I'm in supportive of that. If Lower Providence is the top of the best safety township in the country, why cannot we be the best quality of water at the same time? Thank you, I apologize, I don't mean to be negative, but I love this place, and I surface the issue.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Okay, any board comments?
I have a little bit of knowledge from having spoken with some of the engineers at PA American Water, so currently, the water source for, and Tim, correct me if I'm wrong on any of this stuff, but currently, the source of water is well water, and that's how it's been with Audubon Water for a long time. They're in the process of doing, I'm not trying to get into discussion, the source of the water is well water, and that's going to, those wells are going to be turned off, and there's going to be an interconnect to have water that comes out of the Schuylkill River that is filtered and treated. And my understanding from talking with PA American Water engineers, and also from the Sewer Authority engineer, is that that filtration process will, first, there's a lower level of PFOS in the surface water than the groundwater, and second, the filtration will remove it, so when the interconnect is done, which I'd expect is over the next six months or so, we, we should have cleaner water, and the PFOS should be at normal levels.
Can I answer, can I answer that? If not, no, they have twenty-one point five million dollars budget, they are bringing water from Royersford, right now, they bringing water from Norristown, they shut down the wells, the wells in Audubon, but still the water, they haven't published the data, you're talking about surface data.
All right, thanks, Ray, we'll, we'll contact them and get more information, okay? Any?
I think just a follow-up on Supervisor Knight, I believe at this point, they have already abandoned maybe all but one of their wells, so they're, they're further along in moving away from the, from the wells, several of which were contaminated, than they wanted, than they projected.
They, they. Shut down the worst ones.
They shut, shut down the three worst ones, and they're continuing to work on it, yes.
Another thing that will happen, I learned through this process, is currently, the water is very hard, and when we get onto the, more of the city water as opposed to well water, the hardness will drop quite a bit, and so that's good for a lot of things.
Awesome. Any other board comment?
Just quickly, I do volunteer at daily bread food pantry in Collegeville on Thursday mornings, this morning, we walked in, there was no bread, no bread, and I, I work with a shift about eight women, we just stood there for, I think it was about two minutes, in just in awe that we have no bread. Luckily, bread did come in midday and that, but again, if you can donate food, donate money, whatever, the need is great, the need is so great.
You can start by donating here, because we are doing the Angel Tree and also Thanksgiving as well, for cards, grocery cards here, too, so thank you for that.
I know I've talked a lot tonight, I just want to, I forgot to put this on the announcements, in addition to the tree lighting on Friday In addition to the tree lighting on Friday, December 5th, the night before, we will once again, I think now for the third year in a row, or maybe fourth, have the pet photos with Santa. So that's Thursday, December 4th from 6:00 to 8:00. Unfortunately, once again, that does conflict with our next board meeting, so we will not be able to attend, but certainly encourage members of the public, especially those with pets, to attend.
You could vastly increase the attendance here if you held, Santa was sitting right there. Just saying.
Well, maybe he'll come over after the pet photos.
He'd be a lot warmer.
All the people come here? Oh, bring the pets, too? Okay, all right.
It's a pet-friendly building.
Okay, any further board comments?
I would just say, happy Thanksgiving and thank you so much for all the work that everybody's done this year, one more month.